At this time, we'll call. The regular city council meeting for June fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell, for the American flag. We'll move on to roll call this evening. Please remember to state your location if you will, whether you're in the city of South Lion or not, please state your location for the roll call. Uh, Councilmember Dill.
Present, City of South Lion.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy.
President, City of South Lion.
Councilmember Walton.
Present, City of South Lion.
Councilmember Kurtswell.
Present, City of South Lion.
Thank you. Councilmember Kibble.
Here, President, or President in South Lion.
And Councilmember Richards.
Present, City of South Lion.
And I am also present and in the city of South Lion. Move on to the approval of the minutes for May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
It's a minor thing, but on page four, below the page, it's a, the sentence starts with withhold the public hearing twenty one, twenty two, and it should have a hyphen or a forward slash between the two numbers. I thought I had second.
Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the minutes as amended.
I support.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Walton.
I'll approve the bills.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and please be aware of the two-minute time limit. There will be a second public comment at the end of the meeting as well. Um, City Clerk Deaton, do we have any participants for public comment this evening?
Uh, we have two handles at the moment. Um, the first one is under Joe Free.
Okay, Mr. Free, you have the floor.
My name is Joe Freeman. I live at three one three West Lake Street. I spoke on our last meeting three weeks ago, bringing the attention of my desire to have the traffic study reassessed on ten mile, along with reviewing all crosswalks. Um, from my line of work and what I do is based on action. When something is brought to an intention, acknowledgement is made. The second time action plans are determined, and the third time is we have a problem. So now my second time bringing this action in these conversations up. I feel that if none of these are addressed, then we have a problem, and then at that point, it's time for me to go to work. I've already discussed some of these topics with the neighbors, and I'm willing to sign a petition. I'm also willing to take it to a social media campaign to address these concerns, and I will elevate it higher to that until we get some type of resolve. I was riding my bike with my son and took pictures of the three crosswalks that we have in the city that weren't even centered and not even in the proper positions. I find that as a big issue. That's all I have to say. Um, I hope that you guys acknowledge this. And that we can, you know, determine next action steps.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. See Clerk Deaton, was there anyone else for public comment?
We do have one more person, David Barton.
Mr. Barton, the floor is yours.
Hey, uh, good, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is David Barton at a two four zero four zero Meadow Creek Circle East in South Lion. Um, I just wanted to, uh, really kind of give a public thanks to Nate. Um, so I, I think you guys will be, uh, talking about the twisted quark a little bit later in the agenda. Uh, I just wanted to kind of give him a lot of thanks for a lot of the help getting us at least to this point. And, uh, hopefully, uh, thank you guys for your consideration tonight. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. City Clerk Deaton, anyone else for public comment this evening?
No, there is not.
All right, we will close public comment. And move on to the discussion of downtown with Nate Mack. Nate, all you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, the hanging baskets were put up on, uh, the first Friday of June, albeit it was a little bit later than we had hoped for. Uh, the, the Public Works Department was able to get them up there, and I just wanted to note that the, uh, vendor Donahue Farms did provide them with a fertilizing schedule, so they'll be able to fertilize them, uh, as needed. Uh, the DDA Board met Thursday, June tenth. Uh, during the meeting, uh, the, the board discussed developing some guidelines for murals as we have um, approved in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, an allotment of funds, uh, based off of fundraising to go towards murals. So the objective is to, uh, have these guidelines in place so that we're able to, you know, remain as objective as possible when we're evaluating potential murals that, that come up. Um, last week on Monday, I attended the Cultural Arts Commission meeting. Uh, during the meeting, the owner of Grand Trunk Home was present, as well as the mural artist that she has selected uh, for the mural on her building. Some discussion, you know, ensued around that, kind of talking about the mural, what the, the idea from the artist is. And it was kind of good to get, you know, the different parties together to really discuss, uh, the project. Uh, last week, I also met with an electric vehicle charging station vendor to discuss their product. I have additional meetings set up to meet with other vendors. Uh, but yeah, we're just wanted to give you a brief update on that. We're moving forward with that. Um, we got the event flyers last week on Friday and went and passed some of those out to businesses, uh, in the downtown and outside of downtown. And then the farmer's market this season so far has seen very strong attendance. Uh, there's been a lot of people that have showed up. Food trucks are doing well, vendors are doing well, so things are going well at the market. And that's the, the, uh, my update for this evening.
Thanks, Nate. Anyone got anything for Nate tonight? Councilmember Dill, go ahead. Councilmember Dill, really quickly, just briefly, so you know, um, I love the graphic, but occasionally it does hide your hand. So if I miss, if I miss you, maybe rotate hands, sorry.
I'll do the little cartoon, I'll do the cartoon hand raise.
All right, thank you.
Um, oh, what did I want?
Sorry about that.
And that's okay. Um, oh, I just wondered if, um, do we ever do any surveying of the vendors at the, um, farmer's market? Like at the end of the season or anything to, um, just talk about things that went well or anything that they want to see in the future? I just wondered if we've ever done that.
Uh, I don't think so, but I know Tim is kind of always kind of like always in discussions with them and getting feedback and then providing that to me. So we don't do like a formal survey, but that's something that we could look for at the end of the season to do, just so that we have something on paper, you know, it's a good idea.
Thanks. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Nate, I had two questions. Uh, the first one is, is there any hope in the South Lion Theater reopening?
I don't want to say there's no hope. Um, I haven't spoken with the owners of the theater, uh, since they made the announcement that they were going to be selling the building.
Because things have really changed since they made that announcement, so.
Right, right.
I was just wondering if there was any change there. And also, uh, I've received, um, probably about seven phone calls. And I, I apologize for not, um, going downtown and looking directly at the clock, even though I, I pass through downtown at least once a day. Uh, apparently the clock in the downtown area doesn't have the correct time. That's the clock by, uh, Grand Trunk.
Okay.
Could you check into that and look on all sides of the clock?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot one more thing. Um, I asked about this a couple of times ago, um, a couple of meetings ago. Do we have any update on the, uh, the ice cream shop that was going to open by, um, by Third Monk?
The Curbin's Cream Replace?
Yes.
Now, I know they had gotten permits to do work on the inside. Um, I spoke with the, the gentleman that owns the building, and he said they had a lot of delays because of COVID. But they had started, I mean, obviously you've been able to see the work that's been done inside, so they're, they're making progress towards opening, so.
Okay, you didn't, you haven't heard of any opening dates or anything?
No, I haven't.
Okay, thanks.
All right, oh, Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Uh, just as a point of interest, I had gone downtown a couple of nights ago and taken some pictures of the little through park right by the barber shop and, uh, with the lights on at night. It was actually a real nice picture. So at least some people on Facebook were enjoying it. So, uh, I thought it looked real cute, though. I mean, it, it lights up really well in the evening, and um, that's a nice, uh, nice upgrade for that whole area. So I was wondering, though, there's a couple of pallets leaning against the wall. Is that, uh, the property owners or, yeah, like that building right next door, or is that ours?
Uh, that's ours. So I actually just got, so we're going to put some little, um, like metal hanging baskets that go on the pallets, and then we're going to put some plants in there, but I just got those in today, so hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have those planted there. So they're all different colors, and they're just going to hang on the pallets, so.
That's a substrate for something. Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, very cute, though.
Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? Okay, great. Thanks, Nate, for the update.
Thank you.
Move on to the Fire Chief Report, and Chief Vogel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, pretty exciting week. Last week, we were able to get the rescue truck back from Grayling. And it came out much better than we anticipated. It's a wonderful project. I encourage all city council members and mayor to stop in the fire station and see it. Or we will have it at the June twenty-third Lake Street Cruisin'. Um, the amount of room that we gained and the look has just been very stunning. Uh, for those of you who read my weekly report in your packet, Oakland County has shut down the EOC regarding the COVID. Uh, which is nice, because I don't have to go to the multiple weekly meetings. Um, I've taken off the COVID report on my report, because they stopped the website from updating, so I was unable to get the current numbers. I think they've been pretty low, so I think maybe that's why it stopped. And finally, uh, Saturday, we participated in the South Lion High School graduation. Um, there was some talk about should we put the flag up with the ladder truck or do some spray, which I, I honestly told the South Lion School that the ladder truck has now become a point where we're saving it for less than sixteen years old. Um, it's coming towards the end of its life. However, we did provide an engine and we sprayed as the seniors left on eleven mile, they were able to drive through. Pretty good event, whereas kids were going back and forth with their cars, some got out in their gowns, and it was a pretty good. Athletic director reached out to me today and said it was a huge hit, so. Paul Benz has started back. We've been doing a lot of CPR classes. Um, we encourage all citizens that if they need CPR to reach out to us, and that's about all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief Vogel. Does anyone have anything for Chief tonight? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Actually, it's not for Chief, but that's, that squealing that's going on in the background make it, makes it very difficult to understand what people are saying.
I believe City Clerk Deaton was able to assist with that there.
Okay, I mean, that'd be terrific, because it's really distracting.
I, I concur.
I, I'm sorry, I was able to mute, um, that person, but they're going to have to unmute themselves. I don't think I can do that.
Thank you, City Clerk Deaton. Um, did anyone else have anything for Chief tonight? All right, thanks for the update, Chief. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
I did want to comment. I, when I saw the rig driving around through town, it looks really cool, and, um, you seem to be really taken with the, those overhead doors, and I thought that was exciting, and it's a different color of red than the rest of the, uh, the fleet, so that's kind of interesting, too.
Yeah, so we, we were, we were very pleased. It, uh, one of the reasons we picked that red was because of the hard water. It just seems to repel it better. Um, we're just kind of trying things out before we buy the big truck. Uh, I, I think that's kind of a hint where the colors that we're going towards.
Yeah, that looks good. Real nice.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, um, did we have some cadets graduate?
Yes, we had two, both from what I like to call the old high school. I'm not sure what the real word is. Um, David Vess and Brooke Schultz both graduated, both of them graduated from the Howell Fire Academy and from the high school, so pretty exciting.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thanks for the update tonight, Chief.
Thank you. Good night.
Move on to the Police Chief Report. Lieutenant Baki stepping in tonight. Go ahead, Lieutenant. The floor is yours.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just got a couple of things. Um, just wanted to let the council know that, uh, we're continuing with our accreditation process. I know that Chief Solva could mention it. Um, it's a long process, and we are currently, you know, revamping our, uh, uh, policies and kind of cleaning the station up. We moved out a lot of old reports that we don't need anymore. Um, so we're still, still plugging along with that. That's a, that's a long, uh, a long process. Uh, Sergeant Sealan and I are both doing it together, and I was told it can take up to a year and a half. So, but, uh, we are continuing every day to, to, to update that and to keep it going. Also, we are in the middle of doing our succession planning. We just had a, um, uh, a, a sergeant list made up. Um, so when we do, uh, do our succession planning, we'll be able to have people plug them right in and, uh, get them where they need to be. Um, so that went really well. We are still waiting on, uh, a, a, a list for the lieutenant. Um, and, uh, that should be coming, I'm hoping, we're hoping next week to start the, uh, the written portion with that. And that's about it for, that we've got right now.
All right. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Uh, Doug, just for the, uh, the benefit of, uh, Mr. Freeman, I say that the, uh, speed monitoring equipment is placed on, uh, Lake Street. I'm not sure how long it's been out there. Do you have any background on that and where you're at? And/or any preliminary findings from that?
Right now, uh, we did do, um, a couple of weeks ago, we did put the speed monitor out coming into town east, just on the other side of, or around Hagadore. Um, and I don't have the, 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 uh, sheets in front of me, but we're able to get, uh, the number of vehicles that, uh, have gone through there, um, within a two-week period, and then it gives us, um, average speeds, the eighty-fifth percentile. Um, it also gives us the highest speed. It also, uh, so we can do a lot with this equipment. Um, so right now, if I, if I can remember correctly, that we, uh, the speed coming into town, I think the eighty-fifth percentile was, I, I know it's a thirty-five zone. I think it was like a, I think it was thirty-eight or thirty-nine. Um, but the average speed total was, I think, thirty-five. Um, so once we're done with, when we got done with that one, we had it put out, so on, uh, so the westbound traffic coming out of town. Uh, I think we put that out last week, and, um, I believe we'll, we're going to keep it out another week, and then we're going to go ahead and compile that data and see what we have.
Okay, great. Appreciate the update.
Yep.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I believe what the gentleman's argument is, the position is, is that not that people aren't following, well, maybe some people aren't, but that it's not so much that people aren't following the speed limit at thirty-five. I believe the argument is, is that the speed limit of thirty-five is too fast for the downtown area. That, that's what I understood it to be. So, uh, maybe we need to get that clarified through him, um, because people, for the most part, will travel the speed limit that's posted. So if it's posted thirty-five, then, like you're saying, the, the eighty-five percentile is following the speed limit. So, uh, so at that point, he probably wouldn't have an issue, but he would have an issue if what he's saying is this thirty-five miles is too fast. I, I'm, I'm just telling you, I understand where the gentleman is coming from. I live in a subdivision, and it's posted everywhere, twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, even on Princeton, and I'm telling you, uh, there are times when there are so many kids in the streets, on the sidewalks. Everybody walking, twenty-five is almost too fast. It's almost too fast, because it's not just the cars, it's the motorcycles, it's everything. So I get what he's saying. I, I really do. Especially in the summertime when everybody is out. Um, so I, I think that, that's just my commentary on that issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I was going to bring this up during the manager's report, but since we're talking about it now, I mean, I do agree, uh, with Councilmember Kurtswell, that is what the concern is. Um, and I thought that, uh, Paul, you had said something at the end of the meeting, and I, I did not catch it, about the possibility of a traffic study. Was that, um, did you say that, or was I dreaming? I thought you said something about that.
No, I did say that, and that's kind of, that's part of what the speed and the, uh, data showing for traffic counts. We're also reviewing data regarding accidents. We're discussing with staff regarding looking at, um, information with the, uh, uh, crosswalk individuals. We're looking at the number of, uh, bus stops that are in that particular location. We're looking at the history, number of houses on the street. There's so many things that go into the study. It's not just those two pieces of data that are showing what the speeds or the counts are, what the average speed. There's a lot of information that goes into this. Uh, the lieutenant and I and, uh, the police chief had a meeting, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, to discuss some of these things and all the data that we're going to be putting together. And I thought I did mention at the last meeting that we would be compiling data, so we're going to continue to do that. And, and then we'll be, uh, coming back, uh, to council with all of that information once it's, once it's all compiled and put into a report.
Would it be possible, um, I know he did not leave his, uh, information, but I'm sure we could find it. Uh, if somebody from the city could reach out and just, uh, let them know this, you know, take some time, and we're not ignoring his concerns?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we can do that if we have the information, the individual's name, if we have his address and everything, hopefully we can try to find that.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
He actually lives two doors down from me, and I think another of his concerns are the, we need to have a more expanded, um, crosswalk there. The, the notion of just two white lines on the road, uh, in today's world uh, is insufficient to be able to give enough account that there is a crosswalk there. We've got signs coming from both sides. I know that there, we meet the, uh, probably the, uh, the expectations that are necessary. But I think that they're really looking for more of the Abbey Road kind of crosswalk where it really glares at you that that's a place that people walk across. And I will say, I mean, I can understand his concern. We've been, I've been grousing about this since ten years ago, and the county kind of threw this at us and forced us to go to thirty-five miles an hour. But people recently, in the last year or so, have been much more willing to, to take a pause. And when they see people queued up to walk across the street, they're much more willing to, to stop going from both sides and allow people to cross. Unfortunately, the to rely on that to be a, a given is a real ask. So as soon as somebody decides that I'm too important to, to stop for this, and they brush through there, someone gets hurt. That's going to be a real problem, so. But I, I have intended to walk down there and, and try to get a, a little bit deeper understanding of what his, his expectations are, so.
And part of that, wherever those recommendations are going to be, are going to all come out within that report. We're, we're not going to do this piecemeal. We're going to do a complete look at it and look at, make recommendations, whether it's crosswalks, additional speed limit signs, locations of speed limit signs, location of the crosswalk signs, all of those things, so that, that'll, that'll be within that report that we provide.
Which is good news for him to understand that we're looking at it quite seriously. Simply because we haven't been talking about it publicly doesn't mean it hasn't been going on in the background, so.
Yeah, and, and I hope everybody is seeing the speed limit sign or the, the devices that have been out there a few weeks ago, and the ones that are out there currently, so that, know, they know that this is part of that, so. But I will update council, or we will in the future when we get this completed.
Anyone else have anything for Lieutenant Baki this evening? All right, thanks, Lieutenant. Great job filling in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to unfinished business number one this evening, charter amendments.
The City of South Lion has previously discussed the potential to make charter amendments to address issues pertaining to quorum requirements, notice of special, special meetings, nominations, and potential conflicts of interest between state law and charter. Additionally, filling vacancies on council. Last November, we placed a item on the ballot relating to our quorum requirement. Tonight, we have correspondence from a city attorney that outlined the potential charter amendments that could possibly be placed on, on a ballot. Tonight, we're, we'd like to set the direction as what, how we'd like to move forward with this, whether any items would actually be on a potential November ballot. As you look through the information we've provided, we've gone through and identified each potential charter amendment. I'd like to introduce each one of those, those items and talk about what the proposed, uh, proposal might be. The city attorneys here also to make comments on those, uh, those potential charters, amendments. The first one, the charter amendment proposal number one is the purpose is to amend Chapter Three, Section three point three of the South Lion City Charter, provide the city shall constitute one election district, which is a mandatory charter provision. Addition of this provision should be amended to clarify that the Elections Commission is authorized to split in established precincts, and the city council is authorized to fix the location of the polling places. The proposal as written is, section, so, section three point three of the South Lion City Charter be amended to state that city shall constitute one election district as required by law, and to clarify the intent of this section, that the Election Commission is authorized to alter election precincts, and the city council is to authorize to fix the location of the polling places. City Attorney, anything additional that you'd like to add regarding that?
No, um, you know, part of this is just that it is a mandatory charter provision that it says that we are one precinct. The other part of this is to clarify what we believe is already the intent of the charter, and this was at the request of Clerk Deaton, just so that there's no confusion whose authority is what.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I think you meant one district.
Yes, sorry, yes.
This, this seems perfectly reasonable to me. Um, I, is this really necessary? Uh, with it being state law, I mean, it's already a foregone conclusion.
Actually, state law specifically states your charter shall say how many districts. So it should have been in it all along. It's not been an issue so far. It's probably not going to be an issue, but if we're doing cleanup, this is probably one of the more important ones to do.
Okay, I, I just thought if we were going to do a vote, and there was other things where this, this is going to be with or without our approval, it will be the case that, um, it's nice to have it uh, like a monument that it says this is the case, but at the same time, if there's other things that's, that might end up being more uh, the will of the people, that, that might end up being more important.
Go ahead, City Attorney, I'm on it.
Just, um, I agree with you when it comes to such things that we were talking about a few months ago, about amending the, um, for example, amending the Open Meetings Act notice requirement that we say twelve and it's eighteen hours. Totally agree with you. State law trumps. We don't even need that anymore. This one is only, the only reason this is different is because state law specifically says your charter shall say this. That's the only reason this is distinguishable from other ones where you're correct. That is proper analysis.
And it's easy to get rid of, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you. If this says, uh, if it says state law shall say this, and we put it up for a vote, and it comes, no, and they say no, then what?
There's nothing you can do.
If it has to say that.
Yeah, there's nothing you can do at that point. You've done everything you can do.
All right.
Does anybody have any misgiving with this? I mean, it seems like we can push this. Does anybody have any misgiving with this? I mean, it seems like we can push this forward.
If there was any more questions.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead. Sorry.
No, do you, uh, do you want to handle these individually? You want to just go through them all and then come back and decide how we move forward on them? What, uh, how do you prefer that we, uh, we move on these things, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I would actually, uh, delegate that to you, City Manager Zalnik. Uh, how do you feel about that, Paul?
Well, I'd like to go over each one, and then as we go through them all, we make the determination of which ones we would actually like to move forward with. Um, you know, there is another item on the agenda tonight that potentially could influence whether this or any of these other items, um, would would all be included on a ballot. Or should not be included on the ballot. But I can go over the next one if you'd like. I'm sorry, City Attorney.
Yeah, go ahead, City Attorney Amami.
Just to remind everybody of the process, um, when we did the charter amendment last year, you recall, we came up with our own language. We sent it to the Assistant Attorney General to do a unofficial informal review of it. They then tweaked the language. That's when it comes back to city council for final approval of the actual resolution with the ballot language. Then it goes to formal review to the AG's office. And we pretty much know they're going to approve it because they've approved it informally. And so this is really the reason we're doing this without first having sent it to the Attorney General for informal review. Is because when we last met, we weren't really clear on which ones we want to go forward on, which ones we don't, how many we want to put on. And now we've got this road millage issue. So really, this is kind of a preliminary review. Because the Assistant Attorney General hasn't even done their formal review on it. So I just wanted to kind of remind you of the process and where we are in the process.
Thank you for that refresher course, City Attorney Amami. City, or excuse me, Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since this is probably going to be the only real opportunity that the public is going to have. To understand clearly, um, the arguments for or against or whatever. Um, maybe just on the first one, uh, uh, if the city attorney could just go into the the clarification a little bit. So it's very clear is that, uh, when we talk about, uh, constituting one election district. You know, maybe you could just inform the public what that means, how, uh, one election district differs from, um, a district with several districts. Like bureaus and wards and things like that, and what we're doing there. And that the Election Commission is the state election commission, and only they can determine the parameters of the precinct. So it's not like city council has any authority to 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 determine a precinct, only the location of voting in that precinct. So just thought I would, just just to give some ba- general background for the public.
So, one correction, the Election Commission, that is us. That is Clerk Deaton, myself, and Dave Heber from the county.
Well, when I spoke to someone in City Hall, I was told that that was at the state level. The Election Commission at the state level.
This charter provision talks, so, so if you look at the, um, the statement of current wording. This is what it reads right now. This is the format that I have to follow when I send it to the AG's office, which is why it's in this format. So under proposal number one, paragraph C, this is how it currently reads. Um, the election precincts of the city shall remain as they existed on the effective date of this charter unless altered by the Election Commission according to statute. The council shall establish convenient election precincts in accordance with this charter and statute. So the question that had come up, which is what prompted this, is Clerk Deaton has to actually separate one of our election precincts. Because it exceeds the number of voters allowed.
Okay.
And the question.
But that's because it's in the statute. The statute is controlling the amount of people that are in your precincts. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that, okay, then, then what I said was, uh, it may be the Election Commission for the city. But you can't change the boundaries of a precinct unless you meet the the formula that the state has. The state has a formula.
Which is the numbers, correct.
Which is the numbers. So you can't, you can't move those precinct boundaries around unless you are exceeding the the numbers in that formula.
Correct.
And so it's, it's not like city council can go and say, oh, well, we've decided, you know, four precincts is too much. We want to condense and go down to three, or we don't like four precincts. Maybe we ought to break this up and and maybe have eight precincts. You don't fit the formula, you don't get the change in the precinct boundaries. So the, your Election Commission is bound by state statute for those boundaries in the precincts.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then that's where the question came up was, well, who determines that we have to create another precinct and, uh, another precinct? And who decides the location of the precinct? And so the way I read C, this is saying the Election Commission decides whether new precincts need to be established. And council actually decides the polling places. And so that's what I'm trying to clarify in this proposal.
And then if you're just to explain, uh, what an election district is.
Clerk Deaton, is that a better one?
For those people that have never been to New York City.
Um, I'm, I'm actually going to see if I can find.
Or, or Chicago.
I mean, I'm trying to find a definition for you, for the public, and it just says, a district that is created for the administration of elections.
We're not divided into bureaus, uh, bur- boroughs. You know, we're not divided into wards. We're not divided into boroughs.
We're just one.
We just have one major election district. Out of that, it, you know, we have our precincts. But we don't elect our council members based on the precinct they live in. Or the ward or the borough that they come from. They are elected on a general scope, on a general level. So they come from all areas of the city. That's basically what one election district means. So.
Thank you.
So do we have any more feedback on this first one? All right, Paul, do you want to move on to the second one?
Yes, the second one for charter amendment proposal number two is the purpose of this amendment is to amend chapter five, section five point six of the South Line City Charter. Include the process for filling a vacancy in elective office in the event of a tie vote of the remaining members of city council. And provide that any vacancies which occur one hundred and twenty days of or less before the next regular election shall, shall not be filled. So we have a couple of different options which we're looking at for this. Um, the first one does discuss, uh, um. Propose, the first option is shall a section, section five point six of the South Line City Charter be amended to include a requirement to draw lots among the qualified candidates? And the process therefore to fill a vacancy in an elective office in the event council is unable to fill a vacancy. Due to an equal number of votes cast by the remaining council member, or remaining members of council. And to include a provision which precludes appointment to a vacancy in an elective office, which occurs one hundred and twenty days or less before the next regular city election. The other option for this is shall section five point six of the South Line City Charter be amended to include requirement of the special election. And the process therefore to fill a vacancy in elective office in the event council is unable, is unable to fill the vacancy. Due to an equal number of votes cast by the remaining members. Lisa, would you clarify those particular items?
Yes, uh, you can see the only differences are in paragraph B and D. The rest of it, um, actually in E two, there's two options. I tried to make it as simplified as I can so that all I'd have to then do is cross out the option that you decide not to go with. You might recall last month, we talked about the different options, um, about whether or not we fill a vacancy. Based on a tie by drawing lots or whether we hold a special election. The language that I used for the drawing lots one, I actually took from the Michigan election law. Because it's specifically townships specifically have that language available to them. And since it's been tried and true, for lack of a better term, I just use that same statutory language. From, um, appoint of township offices under the Michigan election law. And then as for the second option, um, this is the one I took from. Um, we, we actually talked about this one, the special election one. And actually, this, I've used other communities that I came across for the special election.
Councilmember Dill, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kibble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, and I'm sorry that I wasn't clear on this when we first talked about this. Um, when you were talking about casting lots, I guess I assumed the lots would be cast, um. Or, you know, you would be drawing with the two people that tied or the three people that tied. But it sounds like if you had ten people up for the vacancy, that you're going to pull from all of those? Or just from the people who were involved in the tie? Am I making sense?
You're making sense, and my intention in drafting this language would be just the two people.
That's not how it read to me.
Wow, that's a problem.
Because it read to me, and I, I mean, I could just be reading it wrong. It says, um, where is it? By, um, by the, I don't know, I can't find where it said it, but it said by the remain, where is it?
No, you're right. It's, uh, it's not.
Remaining members.
In the event of a tie vote of the remaining members of council, and the council is thereby unable to fill the vacancy. Council shall appoint a day for the appearance of all candidates for the office.
Right.
For the council for the purpose of determining by lot among the candidates.
Right, so that to me read that everybody that was up for it could be potentially win this casting of lots, uh, when it seems like it shouldn't be there.
You're correct, and I will tweak that language before we send it to the AG's office if we go with that route. I'm sorry.
That's all right. And my second question was, on the special election, um, in general, how much does a special election cost? Like, what would, I mean, are we talking?
That would probably be for City Clerk Deaton.
Yeah.
Well, for a special election, it'd pretty much be like a regular election. I mean, we're still having to send out the same number of absentee ballot applications. We're still having to hire people to work. Um, so it could be anywhere from six to twelve thousand, I would say.
Because our, I, at the last meeting, I was more, I was leaning towards that. I think, in fact, I said that's the one I liked, but I didn't even think about the cost of it. So it just seems like the casting of lots, if we could change that wording, seems like a more economical way to do it. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton, just a moment. I'm going to go to Councilmember Kittle first. Go ahead, Councilmember Kittle.
Okay, I had, uh, two things actually. To me, it seems as though if we go with the drawing of lots. The notion of having to establish a second meeting, rather than you've got all the players right in front of you at that moment. So, um, it seems as though if you have contenders that are vying for the same position. Uh, first off, I, I think that it would be necessary for them to get, uh, three approved votes. And secondly, that, um, why would you end up creating this to go on for another day? When everyone that's a participant in the action is already in the building to to take care of that business? I don't, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. We're all there, draw. So, uh, and secondly, the, the one that goes to, uh, if we were to go to a special election. Uh, is there a likelihood or even a a remote chance that we could cut some of the costs? If we were to do that in the event that somebody else, uh, the schools or somebody was going to have a special election for, uh, some, something that they had going on?
No, it wouldn't change.
Okay, because you're still paying all the staff to to be there. Yeah.
Still paying for the staff, the publishings that we have to run, the ballots themselves, the applications, the mailing. So.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, but I just thought I'd make sure. All right.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead, and then Councilmember Kurtzwell, I'm coming to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I just had a question. I guess I'm a little confused about the verbiage of. Any vacancies which occur one hundred and twenty days or less for the next regular city election shall not be filled. Are we keeping that verbiage?
Yeah, I was proposing that. It's up to you guys. I just, there, I think there needs to be some cutoff where you're not required to either hold a special election. Or draw low lots if you're so close to a general election.
Okay.
But it's up to you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, actually, uh, I was pleased to see that notwithstanding the foregoing. Uh, and the reason for that is that I think that only puts you about four months before the next election. And I think to appoint somebody, you know, in the month of July. Uh, when everybody has filled out the petitions to run for council and then to pick somebody and potentially give them advantage, an advantage. Uh, uh, to, uh, being elected over maybe two or three other candidates. Um, I would rather play it fair and and even the the, the board as much as you can. And just say, you know, one hundred and twenty days out from an election, you don't make an appointment, go out and let the voters decide. And there you sort of have your, um, cake and eat it too, where you have the voters, uh, making the decision as to who should fill that slot. So that's my two cents on that.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Well, the downside of, uh, of prolonging the whole thing is that you could actually, we've had circumstances where we were bitterly opposed in. The way that we were conducting business. And, um, if we, if that were to be recreated somewhere along the line. Uh, that would be a heck of a long hundred and twenty days of getting nothing done and having an awful lot of strife between members on, on council. Um, I, I don't know, I, as much as I like the idea of the electorate being the ones that make determinations on who's in charge of. Making decisions on their behalf. Um, if you can't come to a conclusion within the council on somebody that that is. Good across the board, uh, I think that it's better to have, have the, the draw so that you have. The chance to have a majority so that, uh, business can be conducted where you're not stalemated for the entire term. That exists before the next election. So that's, that's just my two cents.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the comment to that is, uh, that's the democratic process. Um, I, I think that there's always some level of struggle and some level of tension when you are discussing issues. When you are discussing matters, when you have, um, ideological differences that come to the table. That's what a democracy is all about. I mean, if you want unanimous voting, then then all you need is really one person sitting on council. You need a king. Um, but that's not what we have. We have a representative sort of form of government where you have different people with different points of view. And if, and if not, everybody agrees, then that's the challenge to leadership, to move forward and try to find the compromise. So rather than shutting down the process and saying, let's make it easy on ourselves so that we're not challenged. With, with, with these sometimes difficult elements of democracy. You know, let's just make it easy and appoint somebody so that we can just sort of move things along and and go home and collect our check. So I, you know, I, I think that you learned, you learn to live with it, and and that's the challenge to leadership. So I'm, I'm still going to stay with my position is to keep that, uh, position, uh, unfilled for four months before the election. Thank you. Uh, position, uh, unfilled for four months before the election. Thank you.
Do you have any other feedback here on the second proposal? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
No, between the, the two, uh, words, wordings of the, uh, proposed amendment, I, I do prefer option one. Uh, I'd like to see the, uh, the drawing of the lots between the candidates that tied. Uh, doesn't make sense that the, uh, council has already, uh, uh, voted negatively on the previous candidates to include them in that. A hundred and twenty days out is a reasonable period of time. Actually, this process, I think, pretty much replicates what the, uh. School board for South Line just went through to replace the, uh, the, uh, member that just resigned. So. Um, it doesn't, we don't need a, a special election for it. You know, I think the, the candidate can be added to the, uh, the ballots that's coming up on the next election, whoever's having that election. I mean, we're going to have a, a city election or we're going to have a national election every year. So, uh. You know, the opportunity is right there. We don't have to have a, a special one in the middle. So, uh. I think it makes sense, and I think number, uh, option number one is, uh, that's the one I would go with.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Um, I would agree. I would also, um, prefer one, and I also agree that the hundred and twenty days should be in there because I do think it would give somebody an unfair advantage. Yeah, upcoming election.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'm going to go right along with the rest of them. I think that is the best option for us.
Okay, Councilmember Cretwell.
I, I agree with, um, uh, the position, uh, with Mr. Kennedy is go with the lots and, and forget the special election.
Okay. Well, uh, with that, we'll move on to number three. City Manager Zalnack, go ahead.
Uh, the purpose of this amendment is to amend chapter four, section four point six of the South Line City Charter to provide the city council members. Shall vote on all matters except. One, on any question in which he or she is financially interested, or two, on any question concerning his or her own official conduct. Or three, on any question concerning a conflict of interest is defined by city ordinances or state law. The charter amendment proposal for number three is shall section six point. I'm sorry, section four point six C of the South Line City Charter. Be amended to add that councilperson shall abstain from voting on questions which present a conflict of interest as defined by city ordinances. Or state law and to remove the requirement of unanimous consent to abstain from voting.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Uh, this, this is a no brainer. I mean, it should have been in there to begin with, so.
Councilmember Cretwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to address the question, if I may, to the city attorney.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is, when it says that, um. On any question concerning a conflict of interest is defined by city ordinances or state law. But what do you do about, uh, governing codes of conduct for those members of council that hold licenses? You know, uh, for example, you know, I, I hold two licenses. Uh, and I may be working on a third. I hold a, a broker's license in real estate. I hold a. A, a law license, and each of those professions have codes of ethics. So a code of ethic may, may bar me from a particular vote, and I think I have discussed the one issue. Where, um, it may involve a client. Right. You may not, you may not, I, I may do pro bono work for somebody. But let's take, you know, and, and I'm not getting paid, so I don't have a financial interest. But, and say this, this client of mine that I've represented pro bono owns a piece of real estate and the city wants to move forward. And maybe foreclose on it or something because they haven't paid taxes or whatever. And I say, well, I like to abstain from voting because I have a conflict of interest. Well, do you have a financial interest? No. Well, is it in violation of city ordinance of state law? No. But it's. But it's in violation of the code of ethics of which I hold my license, and council says, well, too bad. Well, no, I, I can't. Council doesn't control my license. The state bar does.
But that's why I put. Uh, or on, I mean, you're, this is, you're the reason this is here, in my opinion. Or on any other question which presents a conflict of interest as defined by city ordinance and state law. I don't limit the state law to any one particular statute. So you would, if you have a legal conflict of interest, that would be under state law, and in my opinion. It would fall within the, any other conflict of interest.
Okay, perfect. Then it's like, so you're taking a broad view that state law includes professional codes of conduct, blah, blah, blah.
If by law you have a conflict and you can't vote on something, you should be able to abstain, and that's what I'm trying to do with this language. I did take a broad approach for that reason. I don't see a downside unless you can think of one. But if state law dictates a conflict of interest for anything.
Okay.
You should be able to abstain from that.
And there, there's a, by the way, there's a lot of city councils that have attorneys on them. In fact, the, uh, school board just put an attorney. On, uh, on their school board, so I can assure you that these issues aren't germane just to me. But, but thank you. Thank you very much for your, for your effort.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
With that, to the point, that is exactly why this language is being looked at. So to allow you and people like you. To, to be able to be on council without having any concern about. Being forced to either decide that you don't want to be on council or to have to break your code, so.
I also want to point out, um, that I, this proposed language takes out the requirement of unanimous consent as well.
That's correct, yeah.
Just so it helps a little bit as well in that front.
Thank you.
Anything else here for number three? All right, City Manager Zalnack, let's go ahead and move forward.
Purpose of the amendment is to amend chapter thirteen definitions in general provision, section thirteen point one. To add a new paragraph to state that in event of a conflict between state law and the charter, state law controls. So the charter member proposal number four is shall section thirteen point one of the South Line City Charter be amended to include. A paragraph consistent with state law, which states in the event of a conflict between state law and the charter, state law controls.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Another one that's a given. I mean, this, this is a no brainer.
Any other feedback? City Attorney Hamamay, go ahead.
You know, we are going to get into a discussion with City Managers Alenek about what you want. That has to go this time, what we can wait for a future, uh, election. Keep in mind, I, I'd like to add this number six, which says state law controls, but as. Councilmember Kittle pointed out at the beginning of this discussion, that is in state law. So is it absolutely mandatory that we put it in our charter this time? No. Would it be, would it be lovely to have our charter current and all of these changes made? Yes. But when it comes to prioritizing, that's one that you, you know, I wouldn't pitch a fit if you decided to hold off on.
Yeah, that's good to know. I appreciate that opinion. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Uh, I.
Sorry, Senator Kennedy. Sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Kittle. I missed Kennedy there. I'll get him next.
Okay, good enough. Uh, I was, I'd like to, there was some softness on, uh, proposition or proposal two. Is anybody entertaining the notion that we could conduct a lot during the course of that original meeting? When they, we couldn't come to a conclusion. But the idea of not having to draw out the, the whole process by setting up another meeting.
City Attorney Hamamay, go ahead.
If I could just offer a suggestion and play out how you see this actually plays out in a meeting. Because if you have six candidates there, are you going to have all six of them prepared to essentially? Give a speech as to why you should go with them in the event there is a tie? So having it on another day, you would just be bringing back the tied people and not all six candidates. Who were there hoping to get nominated or appointed.
Well, personally, I think that, that the, uh, they have to pre. Hit the bar by, by having support of three people to be able to move forward. So if you can't do that. Um, then it, maybe it does need to, to push down the road. But if you have two people that have. Already received three people supporting them to move forward as the candidate. I think that that's the bar that needs to be established to be able to, uh, to be viable for the lot.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you. Wouldn't the speeches have to happen? At the beginning, you know, with all the candidates? And then when you, then if there's a tie, you wouldn't want to do a speech again because we're not voting on them. That would just be drawing a lot at that time, right?
Yeah, if, and you're envisioning all of the interviews and the speeches would happen at the same meeting where you intend to vote. And then you have essentially a tie.
Right.
And then you would cast lots between the tie to break the tie.
That's correct. Whether it's two or three, whatever that are tied, they would be in the pool.
I, I have not been at a meeting, uh, where somebody was, um, chosen at the meeting. Um, so I'm just asking, is that when you, when they do the speeches, it, does the vote take place right then usually?
Yes.
And I mean, I would, I'd be.
Well, that's the only one that we've had, actually, when Steve was, was appointed. Was, everybody came in, said their piece, were asked questions, and then there had been people that made nominations to support. Uh, whatever candidate and, uh, some, someone. One, someone two, someone three, and Steve ended up being able to get the, the fourth vote.
So how did that, I'm sorry for the interruption. I just want to kind of get, how does that work then? Cause you have to vote on each individual person, and how do you know? So, so Steve is up, Steve does his presentation, you vote and you lose on a three, three tie?
Well, no, actually, you wouldn't end up having a vote unless somebody made a nomination to somebody. So, you know, that, that could end up taking some of them right out of the game. So.
So you're envisioning all the candidates at the meeting, whether or not they've been nominated. Then at the same meeting, they're nominated and they're voted on. Then if there's a tie, then that person gets put in some category for essentially a runoff. Which is the drawing the lots, and then you vote on the next person, and if there's a tie again, then that person gets put in this runoff spot. It's.
Well, then I know that it sounds clumsy, but that they're really, essentially it's, um, a matter of timing. If you've got, if you're. Quite taken with the candidate, you're going to be willing and want to make a nomination for them. And hope that, uh, other people are supportive of that position. Uh, if you can carry the day, then it's a done deal. If you can't, then you're, you're looking for the next. Person to be able to sway the rest of the board. So, and not everybody's going to, to likely get a nomination for people to vote upon. So, I, at least that's been the experience that we went through when she was, uh, when we had to fill RISI seat. And to push it to another day seems when everyone's already there, that just, I don't know. I, it would be uncomfortable for those that didn't prevail. But as a matter of efficiency and, and making common sense, it seems like with everybody being there, it would be time to take care of it.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm simply trying to make us play it out so we see how it works. To me, it would seem people would be nominated before they come and you vote on them. So it seems to me you would ask people to submit resumes and letters of interest. You review all those. You have a meeting where you decide of those people, um, who you all agree. Or, or if somebody wants to nominate them at that meeting, then they move on to the next meeting where voting takes place. And/or you can do the drawing the lots that day as well. But I feel like having everybody would submit a letter of interest and show up might not be what you really want to do logistically.
Well, I mean, I'll let that one opportunity to reflect on, so.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I think part of the problem is, uh, I think the charter says it needs to be filled within, uh, thirty days, and that's the, uh, the challenge. Uh, and that's why it was handled like it was following the charter and the language in the charter at that time. You know, basically you had four people make their presentation. The council members sat there and deliberated. They went back and forth. They provided extra questions. To the candidates and they answered the questions, and then a council member, uh, made the nomination that, uh, you know, they, they said, I want to vote for this candidate. Somebody seconded the thing and they took a roll call vote. Now, if that roll call voted resulted in three, three, four, three against. Okay, that's a tie. Set that person aside. If that roll call voted, you know, resulted in two, four, and four against, that person's out, uh, basically. And, uh, you could go down the line to the next person. They could nominate the, the next one and see what happens. You've got one person that, uh, that had a tie, one person that was voted out, and then at the end of the thing, uh, you've got, uh, maybe you've got one, maybe you've got two. That are tied at three apiece, and then that's subjected to the lot drawing. And the lot drawing could take place at the end of the, the polling there.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Uh, one of the things that kind of throws a monkey wrench in things is what if we land with one person that has three votes? Uh, and, uh, say two or three that have two votes. That kind of turns into a conundrum then.
Yeah.
You're going to get the, the one with three votes. Okay, pull the straw because, I mean, that's an automatic win then, right?
Well, they got three votes for, I'm assuming they got three votes against.
Yeah, well, that stands.
That's the tie.
Right, but that's if there's not another person that, that reaches the three votes of approval.
If, if you had, if you had all four candidates and they all, and you put them up to be voted on, and they all got. Three, four, you know, three people voted for them and three didn't, then at the end of the day, you've got four people that are going to be in that lot drawing at that point. Anybody that got four votes, four votes against them is automatically out. They didn't make the cut. If they got three, four, and three against, they're in that tie thing and they can be, you know, determined by the lot drawing.
Okay, so you have four people that are vying for the position, three of them get two votes, and one gets three votes. So where do you go from there?
Well, you're, you're probably defer to the, uh, the meeting, but it's, uh, the, the, the election that's a hundred and twenty days out. Cause if all you're left with is one person, then yeah, that's a problem.
That's my, my concern, Jack. So, so do you broaden the pool at that point? I don't know.
Well, anybody that's on council, any person that's on the council has to stay for their full term. It could be like Weekend at Bernie's. I got to sit there in the chair, whether they're participating or not, so the end of the term, okay?
I, I guess ultimately though, the second meeting part doesn't, doesn't change that dynamic. So if we don't. Uh, if we don't have a rule that's other than, uh, accomplishing three positive votes. Um, I don't know where, where we go.
Did we go, sorry, I'm just thinking aloud because this is becoming incredibly painful. Um, did we go highest vote getter at that point in time? Did we write something like that in?
I wonder. I mean, well. I mean, you know what, it's no, it's actually no different than allowing a straw to determine. You know, I mean, we've already weighed in and we weren't able to conclude. So we're giving it to the device of two straws, one shorter than the other one. So I mean, that's not like that was sanctioned by a majority of the. That was sanctioned by a majority of the council. So.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Let's, you know, this is, this is, we're probably giving this more consideration than we may end up actually needing to at this point because. I know that City Manager Zelnick is has has a desire to look at what we're dealing with here. And if we can move somebody's ahead, that's great. The question is, we may not end up putting these on the ballot for the upcoming election. Because we have some more important things to address. And that just gives us the time to maybe look at this particular amendment and think it through a little bit more. Rather than try to solve it here in this this forum. So I'd suggest on that one, set it aside, let the the attorney move on the two that are. Pretty straightforward. Determine if we're going to put them on the on the ballot in November and let's move forward with the rest of the meeting. This is my opinion.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Well, if I if I could just make one suggestion, I mean, if if there were some political component to the calculus that's going on. I might end up showing up in the fact that somebody might not be smitten by a candidate. But the idea of the candidate that had achieved three already. Doesn't set well with them. So maybe they would end up pushing themselves to be the third. Approval of somebody that they weren't taken with, but liked more than the other guy. So you then you would have a competing lock. I don't know. That makes sense?
City Attorney Abame, go ahead.
Keep in mind, all of these discussions, we are looking at the worst case scenario. Because God forbid, you get to the point where you can't agree and then you're down to a person that only has three votes. Then you just ask for more applicants and you consider a different lot of people like, I I mean. You're right, we're focusing on something because of past experiences and or concerns and thinking about the worst case scenario, but. I mean, really, the chances of getting down to that nitty gritty are so slim to none that. I think I think Mayor Palchis and and Councilmember Kennedy has a point that maybe we are too much in the weeds on this issue that may never be an issue.
I do appreciate the thoroughness, though. So, thank you, everyone.
Would you like us to bring this back to the next council meeting for discussion? Or do you want to make that determined based based upon our next item of discussion regarding roads?
I I think it's, we need to have that next discussion before we. Decide to throw this back on the agenda. That's just my opinion. Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Well, I mean, we all seem to be pretty much in agreement on the the first one and the, I think it was number four. Is there anything that would preclude the the city attorney from pursuing those? And I mean, even running it through the entire process, the preliminary review with the. Assistant Attorney General and all the rest of that and get that formality and review out of the way. And whether or not we put it on the on the ballot in in November. If that approval carries for a period of time, we could certainly put it on the ballot for the the following year. But she can go ahead and and move on those and get them out of the way at this time. And we don't need to come back and discuss all four of them if we're in pretty much agreement on the other two.
Well, we have three, right? One.
Well, I'm talking about the the two that, you know, well, whatever the other one was there. I'm talking about number one, number four and.
Three, yeah. Two is the contentious one, yeah.
Yeah, just set number two aside. Go ahead and and move forward on the other three that everybody seems to be in agreement on. And go ahead and get through the preliminary review and all the rest of that. And then we can make a decision whether we actually include it on the ballot in in this November. Or it's the the work is already done. It can be put on the ballot in in November of of twenty-two or something, you know. But at least that work is already done. We've we've made the the work to to make sure that it's going to be updated. And we just, you know, got one to deal with instead of having all four linger in limbo here.
So who wants to take that and put together a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Oh, I.
Hang on, City Attorney, City Attorney Abame, go ahead.
I don't need a motion at this point. You're not approving the language. I need a direction. I'll submit it to the Assistant Attorney General. We'll come up with finalized language of these three proposals. And then you can decide from there at a future meeting.
Easiest motion I ever made.
All right. Good discussion. We'll move on to unfinished business. Number two this evening, road improvement discussion, next steps.
Based upon the city's south line, receiving a road conditions assessment, performed the Pacer rating and prepared additional information pertaining to road funding options. Tonight, we have our fourth discussion on roads after receiving that Pacer rating. The discussion tonight includes frequently asked questions. Addressing long-term repair of our roads, including discussing revenues, expenditures. Funding alternatives and additional information on how to move forward with determining a long-term solution. First of all, I want to identify a couple items that start out regarding discussion regarding millage rates. I've gone through and reviewed with the assistance of our city clerk, looking at minutes, budget approvals. Are in our millage rates, historic information on millage approvals and millage reduction fraction calculations. Which includes state forms which indicated millage levies and heavily rollback numbers for prior year as well as the current year. I discovered in prior resolutions and and approved and separated where they had separated general fund millage, capital improvement funds. Waste water bonds, the millage rates. Based upon that and based upon discussion that we have at our prior city council meeting, we approved our millage rates. These calculations do indicate that our limits for what our maximum levy for the city's south line would be would be fifteen point five nine nine five mils. So that includes everything relating to the general fund, the waste and the wastewater bond and a capital in a capital improvement fund. Therefore, the one mil that was approved for that red that red which will not for roads and what that was discussed and approved at our last meeting will not be allowed. Or will not be added without the voter approval of the residents. The next meeting, we will need to either have a motion to rescind or amend a budget to approve this, to make this correction. Uh, this, we cannot have this additional millage for roads without the approval of the electorate. Prior administrations had done separation of millage rates for general fund, the CIP. And based upon discussion with our bond council that we had today, these particular millages, millage rate should be put together in one mil. So therefore, I apologize that we will not. Would not be able to have this, the original millage approved, which was discussed at the last meeting. We're going to have to bring this back to determine what our exact millage rate, which is allowed, which is fifteen point nine nine five at our next at our next meeting. That is what is allowed by, that was what is allowed by law. At no time was any millage levied in excess as what was allowed by law in the city. And even this particular year that we were moving forward based upon this particular budget approval, we have not prepared the tax bills and no tax bills of anything of. Any sort have been set out with those new particular with those millage rates. So I'll entertain questions if anybody has regarding that before I move on to discussion regarding roads.
Well, I just want to thank you personally for clarifying that for all of us and for anyone that's watching at home. If anyone does have any any questions for City Manager Zelnick, please go ahead and raise your hand and we'll get started on that. Okay.
All right, I'll move forward now with next step, next step discussion. We're now reviewing in great detail the financial information. To help everyone make an informed decision on whether a ballot proposal is the right choice to put before the voters for a road improvement program. Additionally, we also need to determine what level of funding is necessary to take on forty-one million dollars of road improvements that are needed in the city of South Lion. I provided each of you information within the pack today, which identifies how much one mil of levy will create in additional tax dollars for the city. Each additional mil will levy approximately or will generate approximately four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in tax revenue. The beginning fund balance of the road funds right now, current local street is around six hundred thousand dollars and the major street fund is two point seven million dollars. On a yearly basis, new Act fifty-one funds could be transferred from major streets to local streets, but not vice versa. These two existing fund balances could allow the city to start a road improvement program. And work on the design and planning of projects prior to receiving a first year's road millage if it is actually approved. However, this existing fund balance is not enough to rely on, rely on for a complete road improvement program. The only way a road improvement program can work would be to have numerous funding sources of revenue. And this includes a local and major street fund could be used on a yearly basis as well to supplement the road improvement program. Approximately four hundred thousand dollars a year could be used in the road improvement program for taking from those particular funds. The last year of our wastewater millage would be levied is two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. If a ballot approval or a ballot proposal is proposed, it will be levied for the first time in July of two thousand twenty-two, if it is in fact levied this November. This would mean that there would be only. Separate of that, going back to the wastewater, this would mean that there would only be four years where both the water or wastewater millage and road millage will be levied at the same time. However, because the wastewater millage has an existing fund balance of almost one year's payment for a bond. The levy will be completed in three years, actually, one year earlier. I've identified some frequently asked questions that come up or that potentially that would assist residents as well as council members. To help further explain this, or if anybody has any questions that's watching from the general public today. First question would be is what does the city wrote, what does the city's current road funding go towards? Current road funding is used to pay for wages and benefits associated with cost of routine maintenance of roads. Patching, sweeping, snow plowing, salt applications, storm sewer repairs, traffic services, signals and equipment. The current funding, though, however, is inadequate to fully fund any type of road improvement program, which I had mentioned earlier. How much money would each general, would a millage increase generate? Each mill generates approximately four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in road funding in the first in the first year. In future years, however, funding will be dependent upon future property values and all be subject to heavily rollback calculations. If we're looking at a potential millage, how long would the millage or road improvement be levied? Most millager are approved for a millage would be levied for a ten-year period. How will money raised be by a millage increase be used? The funds will be deposited in interest-bearing municipal street fund that can only be used as described in the ballot proposal. And cannot be used for city operating expenses or for any other purpose. The next question is, why are we not bonding for road improvements? Bonding by a city basically is borrowing of money to pay for a public improvement. Bonding for any road improvement will increase overall cost of the initial project. Just as a mortgage, there are costs for setting up the bond and principal and interest costs to pay back upon. We would need approximately one point one five million dollars to pay off each one million dollars of bond debt. How would the potential millage increase be levied? If a road millage millage increase is approved, it would be included in property tax bills starting in the summer of twenty-two. And that is only if it is levied this, if is approved in this particular November of twenty twenty-one. When will we see any road improvements program begin? If a millage is approved in November of twenty twenty-one, the initial planning and design work will be right after the November twenty-one election. And the road construction would begin in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Next question is, how will the road projects be prioritized? Project priorities are based on the Pacer rating, which is a condition of the assessment of all roads in South Lion. The road condition, age and utility of improvements will also be considered in setting out a plan for twenty-three point five miles of local streets. And four point five miles of major streets. How will the roads be be repaired? Roads identified as poor will be reconstructed by pulverizing the existing pavement. Followed by grading the pulverized material and placing at least three inches of new asphalt. Roads in fair condition, the repair would include a million of the top surface base repairs and one and a half to two-fold width of asphalt overlay. The next questions are, are all roads in the city of South Line under the jurisdiction of South Line? The answer is no. Certain roads, Pioneer Trail and Ten Miles, for example, are under the jurisdiction of the Road Commission of Oakland County. Those roads are maintained by the Road Commission of Oakland County. Will there be any other work done along with the road improvement program? The city is in the third year of a four-year program to inspect all underground infrastructure. This includes sanitary sewer and storm sewer. If there are any improvements that are needed to any utilities in the same areas of road project, they will be completed prior to and at the same tide as the road improvements. And how will those improvements to the sanitary sewer or water main be paid for? The sanitary sewer and water main improvements we paid for by the water, water and sewer funds, they will not be paid for by proceeds from the road millage. The next question is, what happens if the road millage doesn't get approved? If a road millage doesn't get approved, the roads will only receive minor preventative measures. This includes pothole patching, crack sealing, et cetera. The city would have to save money for several years before taking on a subdivision paving project. As you remember, last meeting, the subdivision that was identified was three million dollars to repair that particular subdivision. And how long will the road improvements last? Reconstruction of a road lasts approximately twenty to twenty-five years. Maintenance will increase that life expectancy. And rehabilitation will last between ten and twelve years and can also be extended with some preventative maintenance. I also talked about if no additional millages pass, the establishment of the SAD could potentially be used for road groupings that could be done in individual streets. Or subdivisions. That was discussed at the last meeting, and I think council looked at going towards a road millage instead of a special assessment district. I would plan on keeping this item still on the next upcoming agendas. If we are looking at putting something like this on a future ballot, this is one of the next five meetings that we could have to discuss this. So we still wouldn't have to have information supplied to this, supplied to the county until I believe it's August tenth. So right now, we also have our engineers here tonight that we happen to answer any questions or myself. Or Patricia are here are also to answer any questions regarding funding or bonding or anything of that nature.
All right. I think we're going to have a lot of questions. Councilmember Kittle, I saw your handle up earlier. Councilmember Dill, we're coming to you next.
I was curious, since Headley seems to be the biggest obstacle that we've got to try to move forward. I was hoping that you might be able to define or give us a sense of what the headway rollback and the headly override. Were and how we might be able to implement them.
Well, if we were to say, if I'm not sure if I understand the total question, but first, if we decide to put something on the ballot and where we are going for a heavily override. We could potentially be asking voters to approve up to a specific millage rate. What we are allowed to levy by law for cities is twenty mils. Right now, we're levying at fifteen point nine nine five, so we are below that approximately just just over four mils. If we decide that we want to levy up to that heavily override, we would be asking voters to approve that. And then we would use those particular funds generated by that additional millage that is. Garnished by the heavily override to be used on roads or road improvement program.
And can you speak to the rollback?
Each year, the city, the city clerk reviews with information that are provided based upon the current millage rate. A millage reduction fraction, which is based upon the law that was provided through Headley years ago, which limits the increase that we possibly can have. So if we actually levy a particular millage each year, that number drops. So originally, it may be twenty, but the following year it might be nineteen point nine five oh. The following year might be nineteen nineteen point nine four five, and it continuously drops, but that's based upon property tax. The property tax levy as well as increases in property values within the jurisdiction, which are limited based upon whatever millage you actually are levying.
That's also influenced by the growth of the community as well, isn't it?
Exactly. That's that's exactly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dill?
Thank you. Excuse my inexperience on this, but I just have, I just was wondering, we're talking about the. Water waste, the water millage and when that will end. Is there any way that you can? Can you, is there any way that you could do? I don't even know how you would make the the wording on this, but you could do, say, two mils for the next two years and four mils in the years after that. Does that make any sense?
Yes, you you could do something like that. That is, that's an alternative. You could potentially levy, you know, particular mills. For so many years at a certain amount and then raise it or vote on it again or include it all with the one ballot. We'd have to have that language reviewed by bond council as well as the attorney to make sure exactly what we can and cannot do.
Okay, I was just thinking that if you could keep it all the same, then it wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be. You know, when the one drops off, the other one could go off. That's all I was thinking on that. And then the other quick question I had was. When you, on the question, what happens if the road millage doesn't get approved and you said that we'd only see minor preventative measures? Is there still the possibility for the special assessment districts at that time? Is there still the possibility for the special assessment districts at that time?
That's always allowed. We do have by charter a special assessment district that can be initiated either by council or by residents. Where it requires 51% of approval of the residents within that particular district to approve that. I think I mentioned it at a prior meeting, correct me if I'm wrong. But if it is approved, then let's say the, you're putting in a $2 million improvement and you have 100, 100 properties. You're, you're potentially looking at almost, you know, $20,000 per property in order to do that. So instead of a, you know, a tax levy, which you're looking at, let's say if you have a $200,000 house. And you are $200,000 house and you have a taxable value of $100,000, so one mil, you know, generating that additional. $100 in levy. That is more, obviously more palatable as it's spread. Community wide than it is based upon if you just had one subdivision where they potentially could be having. A $2,000 a year payment to pay for the improvements on their particular street if you only do that particular subdivision. I'm giving an example, but it's all.
I wasn't, I wasn't advocating for that. I was just saying that is part of that answer to that question. Isn't just we, if it doesn't get approved, it will only receive minor preventive measures. It would, the rest of the answer would be that we might have to do other things like special assessment district or something like that.
Right, but that may not get approved. So I mean, you know, for, for council to initiate something like that or for residents to initiate. There's many steps along that way with, with a number of public hearings that I talked about at a prior meeting. I think it was. Three or five, three or five different public hearings that you have during the process of different approvals, approvals, which are right. And if a mileage, you know, a mileage is not initiated, or like I said, if you only had a million dollars a year. The subdivision that we talked about last week, our last meeting was a $3 million subdivision. So you would have to look at saving three years worth of dollars just to do one subdivision. And I wouldn't say that we couldn't necessarily do something like that. But to try to do something like that and try to catch up based upon a $40 million. Road improvement program that we need to have done, we would never, we would never get to that number.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So one of, one of the questions there is how will the roads be repaired? And what you read is roads identified as poor will be reconstructed. By pulverizing the existing pavement, followed by grading the pulverized material and placing at least three inches of new asphalt. What if, that sounds like how you're going to approach doing asphalt roads. What about the roads that are concrete? What's the approach for taking care of the concrete roads? And maybe that's a question for Mike.
Well, we'd have to look at each one individually, but you could do anything from patching to even asphalt overlays. Depending how thick the concrete is. So once we get into it and kind of evaluate each road, we'll have a better answer for that, but those are two options that are out there.
You're not really looking at reconstruction of the, the concrete roads. You're looking at, you know, milling them down and then we just, we put the asphalt cap over the top. Assuming that the, the lower portion about down to what you build is in pretty good condition.
Correct.
And Paul, one other question for you, just going back just for a little clarification on the special assessment district. You know, you gotta get approval of 51% of the residents, the households. Are we looking at just the whoever the property owner is? I mean, what 51% are we specifically looking at for agreement to establish that SAD for that subdivision? Is it the husband and wife both or?
It's 51 percentage of the frontage of property that is within the district. And as you're speaking, I'll try to get clarification on what those numbers or what that exact wording actually is.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if it's the husband and wife both, if it's just, you know, whoever answers the door first, yeah, go ahead and do it. And the, the husband finds out later and votes against it. I'm just curious how the dynamics work on that.
I'll get that information. Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Mayor, I would just like to add to the discussion regarding the Headley overrides. Is I, I did some research prior to tonight's meeting on that particular, that particular issue. And there seems to be some mixed results out there on the election side. As to whether, whether or not voters really want to lift that cap. So it appears that the more money you ask for, the less tendency there is to get the override. And the more reasonable and lower the amount, you do get the override. So I just want to let you know that there is risk in terms of what your success is going to be when you ask for. A headly override. Most voters tend not to want it. Thank you.
Well, Paul, I do want to thank everyone who participated in putting together the frequently asked question sheet. I've had. Several people come up to me since the last meeting, since our last discussion on this. And sometimes I have some answers and sometimes I don't, so I'll be traveling with this now. You know, I, I think it's important and forgive me if I'm repeating myself that. We do discuss this up until the point that we decide on how we're going to go and keeping the community informed. And I think if FAQ sheet's a good way to start, I'm looking forward to some pie charts and things like that later.
Yeah, and, and at our next meeting, besides the information coming before council regarding the correction of the budget based upon. The levy and that was done in the resolutions, I'm going to be having the bond council prepare. An opinion based on information based upon whether you are in fact, which direction we should end up going regarding this. Regarding the potential voted heavily override to generate that particular mileage. Or discussion regarding loving bonds for that in order to go through with this approval. And that sample language is really just languages so people get a general idea what you could potentially look at. That's not necessarily what we're going to be looking at, but I will provide you more information at that next meeting. And discussing with bond council, we would also have at the meeting, looking at those options. And what are the pros and cons of each particular one? So like I said, we will continue to have these discussions, additional information that comes in, you will, will provide it. And questions that are generated by, by this meeting or if they come after. With also the assistance of our engineers, because we wanted to look at some specific numbers. They're going to be preparing some additional information for our next, I believe it's for our next meeting or was it the first meeting of July? Mike Roland?
I think it'll be the first meeting in July.
Okay, first meeting July, they'll be having additional information for you to review as well, so.
I want to thank Mike and Roland for being here because it is nice to have their expertise here in case there is a question from the community or one of us. Go ahead, Councilmember Kittle, I saw your hand go up.
I do, I was just kind of curious, I, I'm, I'm sort of at a loss why. Incurring a bond that is the obligation of the community is more palatable than. Breaching Headley. It's still an obligation that the community is, is going to have to bear to pay for. So why is that not going to exceed our limitations?
The bond is a voted increase just as the wastewater bond was. You would levy a specific dollar amount. And I think Lisa, you want to comment on this also? I saw you nodding, looked like you were going to say something as well.
Just that we, we actually had a conversation with bond council and this is their specialty. And the way he explained it to us is there are certain exceptions to Headley, one of them being. Bond, bonding improvements. And so you would not have to do a headly override in order to be able to finance these improvements. If you sell bonds for it and the voters approve the bond sale. It's essentially an exception to the headly rollback.
Doesn't it seem like a kind of an oddball nature that they would, they could vote? To accept the additional burden to, for the override. So why would they be more inclined to vote for a bond rather than the override?
Well, it could be either, you know, the residents may feel more strongly about if you in fact vote for a bond. You potentially could be doing the improvements all within the three or five year period. If you decide that you want to do a heavier override for so many years, that could take many years to generate that same type of revenue. In order to satisfy more residents that want to see their roads improved. Also by levying that particular bond and making those particular payments. So it's basically money that's generated to pay back that particular pond, let's say it's over that 10 year period. You potentially make your improvements with, let's say, the first three or four years. You are potentially getting a cheaper rate to do the roads. Because they're being done with today's dollars or next year's dollars of the year after, not necessarily incurring. The increase in wages or labor or material costs that may be seven or nine years down the road. So it actually weighing those particular options and looking at what the value of, you know, the cost value of a dollar is today. Versus it is, you know, seven or nine years down the road. And those are going to be a couple more items that we'll discuss at our next meeting.
Good, there, I mean, there are. Costs that are associated with bonds that exceed what Headley would end up being. But the idea of getting things done in, in a JIF would be really very attractive. Right up until the time that the entire community is under construction and no one can get anywhere. That would be a problem, so, all right, thank you very much, so.
And, and I identified with you also information regarding proposed implementation, what it could look like. You could potentially, if you decide to do a heavily rollback or have, you know, that mileage that you're going to generate. You could potentially do a couple subdivisions, the first year and then the second year. And then, then it might be a citywide sort of larger improvement program where you're putting, repairing 100 foot on one street. 60 feet on another, 40 feet on a couple other streets.
Right.
But you're, but you're not spending that full two or $3 million, but you're using some of the money that you saved that year. On the future year, so you can do future subdivisions.
Well, it's good to know that there, I mean, it's, this doesn't go over, so we have some options to pursue, so.
Yes, and this is, I think the main focus is of that, is that the public sees that they need to have road improvements. And what we're trying to do is trying to bring in as many avenues and try to bring in as much information as we possibly can. For council to decide that we're trying to address this particular program and what's the best way. Whether council decides or we all decide as, as the group that this November is the best time to do this. Or we start with another program and then put it on the next ballot. We just realized we have to get going on this and developing the best plan to get the public to look at this and say. And agree with what you're doing, because we can't necessarily push yay, we want you to vote yes, or we want you to vote no on something. We're just providing information and trying to give the residents of the community the options.
All right, does anyone else have anything to add for the road discussion tonight? Want to thank the guys from HRC again, thank you guys for being here. And with that, we will move on to new business this evening. New business number one, small winemaker license application, 105 North Lafayette Street. Also known as Twisted Cork Winery.
Do you want me to?
Go ahead, yep.
Okay, so yeah, you were provided the small one, small winemaker license application in your packets. For the, the Twisted Cork Winery at 105 North Lafayette Street. That winery will be located in the basement of that building. They've been doing some demolition, they're beginning some construction on the inside now. And what the small winemaker license does is that it allows. You know, somebody to produce up to 50,000 gallons of wine on an annual basis. And it doesn't count towards the quota licenses that the city has allotted. It's a special license that the state passed legislation regarding a few years ago, so that it allows small winemakers to get up and running. You know, they, they've gone through the city's liquor license application process. They provided all the materials that are required under the ordinance. And, you know, in my recommendation, I recommend approval of this winemaker license. It's not something that they'll be able to. Take and move to a different community as, as you can with a quota license. So if there's any questions regarding this, I'd be happy to answer them. But yeah, just want to provide brief background on the.
Thanks Nate. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Nate, one of the, one of the requirements here in the, in the lease application and so forth. Is that the tenants can't make any alterations without written approval from the landlord. I didn't see that written approval in here. And yet they're making the modifications to the facility. So where do they stand on getting that written authorization?
They've had discussions with the, the property owner and I believe they have the approval to do it. Otherwise they wouldn't have gone and, and requested the permits and things to do, to do work on the inside.
I'm just curious why the written authorization wasn't included in the packet, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
We do have, I mean, Mr. Barton is still in, in the audience if, if he could answer that question better than I can.
No, the, 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 the point was, I mean, that's part of the requirement is it was supposed to be written authorization. I mean, his verbal approval is one thing, but I'm just looking, you know, we're looking at making sure the Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, that's all. I'm sure they're not, you know, they might have the verbal approval, it just might be something that if they don't have it, they might want to get it. And have it in their portfolio as well with all the other documents. One other thing, Mr. Mayor, I would like to go ahead and just make the motion to approve the resolution for an on premises tasting permit. Authorized by MCL 436.1536. For the Twisted Cork Winery locator 105 North Lafayette Street, South Lion, Michigan, zip code 4178.
That's part.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Kittle, thank you for your patience.
I was just, I, I'm, I'm digging this, it's something that really we have very little sway in. But we don't have any exposure either. The, it's not like the quota license in that. You know, we're, if we're, if something goes south with it, you know, we're penalized as a product of that. This is, this is capitalism taking, taking its course and I'm digging that. Both the, the people that own that building, for them to roll the dice that this, this thing will end up paying off for them to have in their basement. For these people to make the investment to go into the basement and start this up. You can't help but think that we're going to see ancillary feet coming, walking down our sidewalks. To necessarily walk into stores that are adjacent to this. This is all good, it's all good. We don't have any exposure, so I'm loving it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. New business number two this evening, purchase a John Deere Z960M. Z track lawnmower for the water and sewer department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members. How's everybody doing? The zero turn mower for the groundskeeping at the water tower, the lift stations at which there are eight, soon to be nine, the clean water plant. Has reached the end of its useful life. The current equipment has already had an oil leak, the mechanic attempted repairs on. Towards the beginning of the season and will not make it through this mowing season. This non-budgeted item can be purchased by splitting the cost 50/50 within the equipment accounts for the water and sewer departments respectively. The dealer has offered to take our diesel zero turn on trade, but we feel that we can get more value by auctioning the diesel tractor. Which is a separate tractor that we have at the plant. This piece of equipment is too heavy for our purposes, is not practical, not practical for everyday use within the department. I have attached the bids here as well, as you can see, to be able to make this purchase and I'm able to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just wondering, so this is a, a, a non-urgent thing that happened. I mean, it hap, you, you know that it's going to, to fail, but it hasn't failed yet. And it's non-budgeted, so I'm just wondering in general, do we have all of our equipment in some kind of asset management plan? Where we have a guess on when things might. Might be coming to the end of their useful life so that they are budgeted. I just wondered. Might be coming to the end of their useful life so that they are budgeted. I just wondered what the reason was for that.
Yes, we do. And this was something I had already had picked as low fruit as we should probably put it in extras budget. And at the request. Of Mr. Zellner, basically said, try to get it with issues if we can. So that's where I'm at. The the piece of equipment did get repaired. It it slowed down the oil leak and now they're we're just having to dump oil in it and. It's it's not going to make it. So. That's kind of where we're at. It's been with us for eighteen years. It's a pretty long time.
Right. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the purchase of a new John Deere Z nine six zero M. Z track for the clean for the clean water plant for the amount of ten thousand five hundred sixty five dollars and forty six dollars. Underline items five nine two dash five five six dash nine seven seven and five nine two dash five five seven dash nine seven seven.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Okay, just curious, this dealership. And Howell, are they offering a one year warranty? Yeah, warranty on their equipment and two or three years guarantee for parts?
Actually, it's through John Deere itself, Councilmember Richards. It's actually, I can take that to a local dealer and I don't have to use Howell. Which used to be DNG and now it just got bought out by this this other company here Hudson. So yeah, I can use any John Deere dealership. So my plan is to register this with the local John dealer here in South Lyon. And then the warranty will take place from there. So I'll have three years, the same John Deere warranty we had for the other tractor. It's X number of hours or X number of years. You're always with our departments. We always run. Run into, okay, we're going to get the the hours way before the years are up and then we get our maintenance through them if we need it, or a mechanic actually takes care of it.
So then we're covered. If they go out of business or whatever, we can just take it to Bader and Son or or Weingart's. When they're gone.
You got it.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. I do have a quick question and then we'll send it over to City Clerk Deaton for a roll call vote. Doug, is this going to be the mower that'll be mowing out at Volunteer Park?
I know this is totally separate. That is budgeted for, that's we call that the back wing mower. That's the hydraulic with the three different decks that most like fourteen feet wide. This only mows like five feet, so.
Okay. All right, great. Just a just a question. I know we had some issues with the with the grass out there. So. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Dilg?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzwell? Walton? Walton, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, oh, yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. New business number three this evening, purchase of cleaning and camera services, airlift and sonar jetting to increase production. From well number two at the water treatment plant as part of well and pump maintenance as outlined in the current budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, number two is located there at the clean water plant on Dorothy. This pump has been pulled for investigatory purposes and and has also been video camered and inspected, determined the course of action to re rehabilitate this well. Our contractor for well maintenance has determined the best course of action to likely produce up to five hundred gallons per minute from this well. And this aggressive treatment process is being done to clean the screen that allows water to pass to the pump. The screen is salvageable and will need. Sonar jetting and chemical to increase production of the rebuilt pump. We have budgeted for the maintenance of all the wells and this phase one in the process of completing proper refurbishment to this particular well. This is what is being placed on the agenda here. I also have, if you guys have time, I remember if it can be done, I could do a screen share and actually explain this a little better. And to what's actually being done. I have some visual, I have video, all that kind of stuff, if if you guys are interested.
Certainly.
Okay. Can I? Share right now, possibly? I don't know.
City Clerk Deaton may have to give you permission.
It looks like I can. I'm going to try.
Okay.
Yeah, any panelists can share their.
Okay. Can anybody see this yet?
I cannot. Oh, okay, there we go.
There we go.
Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
The visual on the left shows an actual pump like we have, which is basically a vertical turbine pump. This portion down here at the bottom is the well screen. This is what we are having cleaned. So a camera, this pump has been pulled, this portion has been pulled, the camera's been taken down all the way down to here to around ninety five feet. Where we then started to see the screen was completely plugged. I can also show the video of this. Because I I took some screenshots to try to be able to share it with you, so you could kind of see what I was getting at. But this is the descent of the camera here. This actually shows it a little bit better. Is everybody able to see this? Let me give it a second to switch. Is everybody able to see that?
I still I still have the same diagram.
Yeah, me too.
Hold on one second here. Maybe if I play it, it will start, because I'm still sharing my screen. It says I am. And I can see the video perfectly well. Can anybody else?
No, it's still still that diagram.
Yeah.
Is anybody able to see that?
No, that's okay. That's okay, Doug.
Well, come over to your house, your office.
Says I'm screen sharing because every, I don't know if I said coming through or not here, the video. So in case it doesn't. Let me go to Plan B. Is everybody able to see that?
It's same picture.
Yep.
That would be.
I think you're going to get the approval.
In very bad shape. It shows it at ninety five feet and it kind of just rotates around. I don't know if anybody can see that. I can't hear anybody right now because I'm. Seeing the video. I don't know if anybody else is.
No, but that's okay.
Okay, as a backup plan, that's why I took these photos, so you can see like screenshots. You only have two unfortunately, or so. There's a lot more there. The screen is completely plugged with minerals deposits. It is salvageable. They are telling me and assuring me that our well pump, our well pump company is saying that they can definitely rehab this. It will have to be done with chemical. It will also have to be done with sonar jetting. And have to be aggressive. It's going to take about four days, but they said they can definitely get it to hopefully produce for us. I apologize, weren't able to see the video. That's that's the best part of this.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually just want to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of the video and clean the screen for well pump number two. The water treatment plant is for the proposal provided by Northern Pump and Supply. For the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars using account five nine two dash five five six dash nine three one.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Okay, Doug, when. The well drilling company that you hired, that we've used them before many times. And I'm sure they've seen hundreds of them. When they inject the acidic chemicals into the well. And then air then sonar jet it to clean it off. Will the particles be sucked out of that well?
Yes.
Go to the bottom.
No, they will airlift as well. So there's a whole series of airlifts that happen, obviously, this well. If you can see the video, it needs to be airlifted prior to them even sonar jetting. It's in pretty bad shape. I had a discussion with this gentleman, but he said he's seen worse, which I was glad for. But he did say that he he affirmed with me that, yeah, this is going to be something we can knock right out for you. And hopefully, after this is done, I can show you a before and after video, maybe with in person would be even better.
Well, I'd I'd like to see it. I can't see anything right now, but I know exactly what you're talking about. Well, as long as the screening holds together and doesn't. Fall apart and we wind up having to buy a new screen or something, then it's it's good to go, you know?
Yeah. We don't perforate it. As long as the screen's not perforated, which they said it's in pretty good shape. It should be something that they can get way better off than what it is and then do some chemical and then airlift again several times. Pull a lot of the the material out and then actually give us a test and say you're good to go.
Okay, sounds great.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walton, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in another roll call vote?
Can I take that screen?
Oh, sorry. I gotta, yeah, I'm doing that right now. Sorry. I gotta get back to where I was on the Zoom. Here we go. I can. Unstop share it is. Okay, sorry about that.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurtzwell? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You're muted, Maggie.
Yes.
Thank you. Richards?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Move on to the budget this evening on the agenda. Do we have anything on the budget?
A couple items, Mr. Mayor. The next meeting, we're going to be bringing before council budget amendments as well as corrections based upon the resolution that was discussed. Earlier this evening.
Thank you for the clarification on that. And thank you for being here too, Patricia. If anyone, no one else has anything on that. We will open the floor for public comment. Please again, remember to state your name and address and please remember the two minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, let me know if we have any participants for public comment.
We do. We have one. We have Ryan Laird.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mr. Laird. Go ahead. Floor is yours.
All right, good evening. I just wanted to quit a couple quick few things here. Lisa, I wanted to say that my heart goes out to your family member that passed away, to you and your family. Sorry to hear about that. You're welcome. And also, I wanted to thank Dana Johnston and the South Lyon Police Department and Fire for their excellent job. And getting the Memorial Day Parade off as well. We also need to make sure we thank Maggie Kurtzwell for her excellent job in maintaining Paul Baker Park. It looks absolutely beautiful with all the flowers. And that water fountain glowing in the middle of the night with those hanging baskets. It just absolutely looks amazing. I had the privilege of helping her keep the park clean, but she did ninety nine percent of the work. So I want to thank for her. Wonderful job. And I also would like to. Put a little joke in here, Dan, if they ever do the reboot of Weekend at Bernie's, you know, I think you'd be excellent. We know, watch you carrying Bernie around on vacation, you know. But with that, I also wanted to say that the South Lyon News and Weather for the Ambassador's page is. Is really taken off in the last two or three days. We are up to almost a hundred and fifty members. And so I want to thank all the people that have joined and. Hopefully, we can kick this South Lyon off to a great summer. It looks like we were turning the corner with COVID. And I think we're going to do really well this summer and I think we're going to have a blast. So. With that, I'll call it a night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laird. And forgive me, City Clerk Deaton, I have been having some internet issues over here and you broke up. Did we have anyone else besides Mr. Laird for public comment?
We do not.
Okay. At this time, we will close. Public comment and move on to the manager's report.
In my manager's part, I update council regarding additional communication with representatives of the South Lyon schools. To discuss the timeline and the expenditures needed for repairing our joint administrative building. These expenditures are to be looked at within the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget, twenty twenty three, twenty four budgets. I have upcoming meeting with them in the next couple of weeks to discuss how are those are those plans moving forward. I want to update everybody regarding the simple recycling. The service has resumed and the scheduling module is active. However, they've uncovered some glitches with the scheduling module that did not appear in simply recycling's testing. As a result, they've conducted a soft launch. The group has decided not to release any promotional blitz about the resumption of services. Because they did not want to do so, knowing that they are not all users would be able to use a preferred device for the scheduling. The Senior Activity Center is slowly opening back up. There are several activities and programs that have already started. Including book club, woodcarvers, breakfast club, et cetera. And numerous others, painting, yoga, swim, et cetera, that are planned to ramp up after July first. I've also updated council with an updated grant sheet that shows you totals of the pending grants and grants received by the city South Line. Last time I updated council on that was actually back in November. And one item also I want to bring up regarding that clock. I know every time we seem to have a power outage, we have to update that clock based upon the time. That it has been off, but we will get with DPW to make sure they do make that correction based upon that last outage. And I'd be happy to answer any questions for anybody they have.
All right, Councilmember Dilg, and then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Walton, and then you, Councilmember Kibble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple quick things. It's been a few days, but I happened to notice that on the electronic sign by the historic village, it still said the offices are closed. And maybe it's changed since then, but I just thought I would mention it.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Actually, I changed that, I think, well, today's Monday. I think I changed it on Thursday.
Okay, yeah, it's been a couple days.
So we're good now.
I just noticed it. And then I just wondered, obviously, the crosswalks have been an issue for a while and we've been talking about them. And I just wondered if. You had an idea for a plan for when. I know we allotted some money for the crosswalk in front of the hotel. If you had any idea like when we are thinking about. Doing something there.
Well, we have to wait till after Ja- July first, actually. Funds for that will be viewed the different types of crosswalks that are in location. We've looked at a couple and that with the Traffic Improvement Association. To discuss that regarding options and then we will come back before council before making place in that order.
I I'm just wondering, are you thinking about it this summer, not till the fall?
Yes, it'll be this summer.
Okay, great. And then the same kind of question with just, I was just interested in timelines. When we start talking about. The trail. And I I know that we haven't talked about what part of the trail we want to. To fix this time. And I just wondered if you had thoughts on timelines for that as well.
Well, I met with our engineers regarding a section trail that was south of Nine Mile that was extremely poor repair. Near the ponds and detention areas. And they had sent on additional individuals to take a look at that to try to give a better estimate, because I think we allocated. I think seventy five thousand dollars in the upcoming year's budget. And as I've spoken with a couple of you also regarding. You reviewing potential long term repair programs, because we need to identify for all our trails of the city. And obviously, looking at potential grant funds for doing so.
Okay. And I just wanted to let you know also that I I did forward you the email for. The gentleman who spoke today about the crosswalks and the traffic study, if you are able to reach out to him or have somebody do that, that would be great.
Okay, thanks.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton, I believe you were on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have several of the same questions that Lisa had. Paul, you and I spoke earlier about the electronic sign and the city website. So I'll just leave that conversation there, but I think that really needs to be addressed. The next question I did have was, when are we going to consider paving of the rail trail in the other sections? Is that something that we can maybe consider putting in when we do the roads, anything like that? I don't know if it has to be separate counts. So those were two of my questions. And it seems I've just lost my third question. Sorry about that. So I guess I'll just stop there for now and we'll leave it at that.
I have identified the sections of trails based upon condition of I I walked it, all the trails to identify which ones would be. I have identified uh the sections of trails based upon condition of I I walked it um all the trails to identify which ones would be the first one and identifying that within the capital improvement plan for which sections would be done first. Um but trying to uh prioritize was done and looking for funding to try to improve that. But this year we did allocate seventy-five thousand dollars. I know last July or June, I think we did the other portion, which was about fifty thousand dollars. That was a portion north of Ten Mile. So we will continually be doing that on a regular basis.
Okay. And you know what? I just remembered my third thing. How are we or where are we at with the handicapped swing from a mechanic?
Uh that order was placed. Uh we're waiting for delivery on that. And then there'll be excavation and I will update council when that's all taking place.
Hey, Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kibble, were you third in that lineup there that time?
I was, yes. Uh I'm I'm surprised to hear that uh you've slated what the amendments to the bike path will be. I'm concerned that we're that whole stretch that goes along MST, that's the oldest section of of path that we've got. And it's really tight. And there's an awful lot of laterals along that stretch that really, I mean, I I'm hoping that we're not using the same um. Yeah. The idea that we we stage it in one area so we get the economies of scale and all that. There's an awful lot of things that need attention where someone's going to get hurt. And we need to address those things before somebody gets hurt rather than going in and spending the whole load of money in one particular parcel. Um I'm kind of analogate analogizing it and some of the uh the scheduling that you've suggested for the roads. And I'm not trying to be overly critical or anything, but I there's an awful lot of trail and a lot of or a little amount of money. And some of these things need to be addressed before we get somebody broken. Um so I was hoping that we could actually have that flip flap where you do it more comprehensive reconstruction in some year and then do a parts of a whole bunch of places in the next year so that we can make sure that no one ends up getting damaged by the uh by the trail because it's too big of an asset to let something like that happen. I I I just wanted to ask you one thing, and this isn't a a suggestion to assign blame or anything. But I'm kind of surprised that Plant Moran hadn't recognized the budgeting issue that we've run into. Um were you surprised by that? Or is that something that you think that they should have caught?
Are you speaking of the village levy that was?
That's correct, yes.
Um you know, there's several different factions within that because they look at what our millage levy is and they look at the totals. I don't know if they have all the information, you know, if they're copied on the what's called the L forty twenty-nines, which does discuss a village reduction fraction. And when millage rates were actually approved or not approved, uh you know, we give them the information. And they, you know, may have deemed it that we have not ever exceeded our millage amount. So there was nothing to necessarily report on, and this would have been the um first year if we decided to levy that additional mill, but since we were below that dollar amount, nothing was ever was ever wrong. So there's never nothing for them, anything for them to really identify um that was incorrect.
Good. Perhaps not incorrect. They've they've come back with suggestions before in the past that um this is kind of clumsy. Uh waited to to process this whole thing. So maybe you might want to look at um amending the way you're disposing of your money. So um.
Yeah, that was that was never identified. But like I said, our conversations with our bond co- bond council today and those discussions and the numbers that we brought before them to look at and told them that this was not how I've 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 ever seen this or this has been done in the past. It doesn't mean it wasn't allowed. But they're they made an immediate recommendation of what they felt was the appropriate way of handling it within the future.
Well, I'm glad that it was thought in the nick of time, but um I I was just thinking if Plan Moran gave us a little bit of warning, we might have been able to forecast this a little easier. That's all. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I wasn't gonna bring it up, but since we're talking about the rail trail real quick. Uh there was an incident last year and I know the gentleman who fell um and uh it it it's the bridge area over there uh by the mill uh by the tube mill. There's a couple, there's a bridge over there. And uh it gets a little damp once in a while. And when it gets damp, you get moss on that wood and it gets kind of slippery. So if you're riding your bike and you're on that rail trail and you hit that, uh he slid and really scraped up his leg uh pretty much. He was with his kid, so I I doubt whether he was going ninety miles an hour. Uh and he has a a small five, six, seven-year-old son. So is there any way that uh there can get some strips put on that wood so that if you're walking on it or riding on it, uh it's got a little bit of like sandpaper on it so that it uh you you don't get that mossy slip on it? He said the whole bridge was just covered with moss. He said it was slipperier than anything. So and and he felt pretty bad. So I just wanna, and I don't think that's a real big expensive fix either. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh Councilmember Dilg, did you still have something?
No, I just forgot to put my hand down.
That's okay.
Sorry.
No problem. Does anyone else have anything for city managers only tonight? Okay, great. We're going to move on to council comments. And we'll start with Councilmember Richards tonight.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me adequately?
Yes, we can, Councilmember Richards.
Okay, uh I'll go fast here. Uh I just want to let everybody know that the Historical Society meets tomorrow night, seven PM at the uh crate house at uh in the park. Um and I'm hoping that Mr. Nate Mack, our DDA developer, uh can attend the meeting. I've invited him a couple of times, but he hasn't been able to make it. Uh and he's uh he wants to get to know all the branches of the city. Um and I and I'd like to just gotta mention that our our garden over there looks beautiful. Uh and we gotta get another sundial somewhere. I'd like to um, oh, moving on, I'd like to make sure that uh somebody notifies me when the new fire truck is gonna be here. So I can go over and take a look at it and maybe climb in it and take a ride if possible. Uh anyway, I'm enthused enthused about it and I'd like to be a part of it. Thank you very much for that one. And uh next one I'd like to mention is up there on Eleven Mile at the Fieldstone Development. I would like to see a progress report from Stante Corporation, their big outfit. On the evaluation of the ground conditions they have encountered in the first phase of this development. They've been out there for a more than a month, so it seems that I walked part of it yesterday and uh looked in one of the deep holes. And uh I can see they're in the sand and gravel at five feet down. And uh it's dry right now, but I'd like to see a progress report from them or an evaluation. They may not want to do that, but I'd like to see something along that line. Next item I'd like to mention is uh I had uh our DP double DPW general foreman, Mr. Ron Brock, come by house, come to my house last week. And I demonstrated to him how I made a repair on a broken bird bath that was made of cast aluminum and had quite a large hole. And uh if you've ever worked with metals, you know, the cast aluminum is very difficult to patch and deal with and and salvage in any way, shape or manner. Uh and I showed him and demonstrated the method that I used to make a complete repair on the bird bath and it held water, however, not under pressure. Uh the implementation of this little procedure could save the city hundreds of dollars in the short and long run with the fact that cast aluminum is very difficult to repair, especially in underground situation. Uh where it might occur there with their low pressure and wet conditions. Cast aluminum is very expensive and difficult to work with it with replacement parts often often being hard to find and almost impossible to come by. And that's all I had on that one. Um last of the leads. Uh I want to thank our founding fathers for creating Flag Day during the onset of the Revolutionary War in seventeen seventy-seven. The Continental Congress created this beautiful Flag Day that we celebrate today, two hundred and forty-some years. And it certainly turned off very nice for our little community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Uh Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh tonight, I just want to thank Dana Johnston, the volunteers and the participants in uh this year's Memorial Day Parade. I think it was a great event for remembering and honoring our uh military personnel who died in the performance of their duties. So uh thank you, one and all. I also want to remind everyone that the Lake Street Cruisin' will be back next Wednesday, June twenty-third, starting at six thirty. So uh make plans now to come downtown, check out the great cars, get some wonderful food from our restaurants. It's going to be a another great summer event. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Uh Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm gonna read something here, but I'm gonna profess this with, I don't think I'm a sports announcer in the same uh way that you are. So please forgive me if it doesn't sound as good. So on Saturday, June twelfth, the South Lion High School varsity girls softball team won its first ever MHSAA regional championship to move on to the final eight of the Michigan High School State playoffs. In game one of the regionals, the unranked Lions beat number three-ranked Heartland nine to three before moving on to the defeat Ypsilanti Lincoln twelve to one in the regional championship game. South Lion is now twenty-seven to six to on the season in which they won the LVC Conference regular season title for the third consecutive year and beat rival and ranked number six South Lion East to win their second district title in three seasons. The energy and emotion this team plays with is infectious. They play for each other and their city. They represent our South Lion community, community with class and integrity, and they wear their effort on every play. The Lions will take on DeWitt High School at four PM in the quarterfinals on Tuesday, June fifteenth at Novi High School. They they're they not only need, but they're asking the entire South Lion community to show up and drown out Novi in a sea of blue and gold. So go Lady Lions. I I wish you all the best of luck. I do apologize. I myself cannot be there due to my work schedule, but hopefully some others can be and be local at Novi High School. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. That was certainly on my list. You did a great job. Just a quick tidbit on that. Some of the girls that graduated on Saturday went right from the game to graduate in their gowns and someone got a great picture of them. And what a great memory to be able to go to your graduation in your regional championship softball uniform. So best of luck to the girls on Tuesday and an awesome job. So thanks, Councilmember Walton. Great job with that. Um Councilmember Dilg?
I'll say go Lions because I was very excited about that as well. Uh love those girls. They're just, I I've been watching them for years. They're amazing. So thanks for reading that. Um I just wanted to say quickly, I just appreciate everyone's efforts in getting events up and running again in South Lion. It's just been a great couple of weeks seeing people up, you know, all over um downtown at the Memorial Day Parade, at the Lake Street Cruisin' um at the farmer's market. It's just been really wonderful. Um I I wanted to give a shout out to Dana Johnston too. I saw her the day before the the um the parade and she just seemed cool as a cucumber. I couldn't believe that she was uh not stressed out at all. Um and then I also wanted to um agree with Ryan that uh Maggie, I'm not a big flower person, but I do, I I happen to notice how beautiful the uh the park looked. I mean, it's it better than better than I've seen it before. It looks really pretty. I like all the purple flowers. So I just want to say thank you for your efforts on that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Um let's see, Councilmember Kibble?
Um I think I've talked enough today. Thanks. Let's just move on.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh let's see here. So Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Mr. Mayor, uh I also would like to remind everybody, June twenty-third, Lake Street Cruisin', please, 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 everybody attend. And as always, I like to recognize some of the sponsors uh for this particular event. We have Performance Creative Resources. We have Advanced Capital Management and Wixom Towing this week. So please, if these uh particular companies come across your way, please thank them for spending their money here in South Lion. Many of the sponsors for the Lake and Cruisin' uh do not have businesses in South Lion, so they are coming from all over. So let's thank them for making an investment in our community. Also, I would like to thank uh Ryan Laird for his uh continued efforts to keep the city clean. Uh I I just have to thank him. I I can't be everywhere and just to have him come into Paul Baker Park every once in a while and help pick up a a couple pieces of garbage and trash. Um every little bit helps. And I want to thank him for uh for him not not caring so much about what he does, but but what it actually the result is. And that's just, he's he's doing his part in the community and and that is just so appreciated. So thank you, Ryan. As to Paul Baker Park, um I don't know if the uh woman will be watching this video tonight. But um if you are, um I think you know why the colors were chosen for Paul Baker Park this year. Uh last fall, I was approached in Paul Baker Park by a a woman who was walking through and she thanked me for the work that I had done. And she came to Paul Baker Park quite frequently last summer as she was a surviving member of um breast cancer. And so coming to Paul Baker Park was very peaceful for her. And she, along the way, met other uh two survivors of cancer. And so she was able to form some friendships. So she asked me in the fall if I could uh somehow uh present Paul Baker Park uh in the memory of for all those individuals that have survived cancer. And so I sat down with um a Duke and Duke helped me uh pick out flowers that were in the color of pink, which is uh the color that is used with breast cancer. And we came with a great color combination. And I want to thank Duke for helping me with that color combination. So Paul Baker Park this year, the color combinations that are there are actually there to um to to represent all those individuals that that are survivors of cancer, not just women with breast cancer, but for all people. And uh we can all do our part, you know, a a little bit of support. You never know where it goes and how far it goes. So enjoy Paul Baker Park this summer, everybody. Good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Um I have a couple of things. Uh we will be looking to go into a closed session after this. Um but a cou- a couple of major announcements, and I want to thank Councilmember Walton for bringing up the softball girls. That and just an awesome win. Um but I actually had two uh teachers that had a very big impact in my life. Uh retired this week or last week, really. They're they're wrapping up their final week here at South Lion Community Schools. Um Claudia Als was my fifth grade teacher and um had a just incredible impact in my life at that age. And so congratulations to Claudia and uh Mark Thomas, longtime teacher at South Lion High School and uh also coached football here at South Lion. He's now currently coaching at Brighton. That's something I've gotten over yet. But um I do want to thank both of them for their commitment to the public education in this community uh for the better part of three decades. So thank you and enjoy the next step in your guys' career. The next thing is actually a pretty major announcement as well and long overdue. It's been on my mind for probably a little over a year, maybe some change. Um but it's time that this community takes a moment and recognizes Dana Johnston uh for her commitment, not just to the Memorial Day Parade. Uh Dana has been volunteering in this community since uh I've known her since I'm seven years old and she was a EMT volunteer at Panther Football. Um so my announcement tonight is is that the city of South Lion will be honoring Dana and the Johnston family with a key to the city um as soon as we can get back into in-person meetings. So her family and those that she has made an impact on here in the city of South Lion will be able to participate uh and take part in that. It's it's sitting right here on my desk. And so uh when we get to that point, like I said, it's long overdue. Um I look forward to being a part of it. Uh but it's uh, you know, forty years of of running plus the Memorial Day Parade and countless other um meaningful uh whether it be volunteering or just being involved in the community, a a lifetime achievement award will be given to Dana um once we get to back to in-person meetings. So um I have not told her that. Uh so I don't know. I I can't imagine she's probably tuned in right now or later, but um we will be reaching out to her and the family and letting them know that. So I'm I'm very excited that we can finally do that. Uh with that, I will not be looking for a motion to adjourn. Um we will be discussing Um we will be discussing the possibility of going into closed session to consider the purchase or lease of real property pursuant to Section eight D of the Opens Meetings Open Meetings Act, MCL one twenty-five dot three-six-eight D.
Mayor Palchett?
Yes.
Before someone seconds that motion, um the statute is incorrect on the agenda.
Okay.
It should be MCL fifteen point two-six-eight, small d, parents.
Forgive me for that. Did you say fifteen dot two-six-eight lowercase d?
Yes.
Okay, let's let's go ahead and give that. Actually, I'll send it over to you, Councilmember Kurzweil. You go ahead.
Thank you. I moved to uh uh consider uh to move into a closed session to consider the purchase of lease of real property pursuant to Section eight D of the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two-six-eight um parentheses D.
That's worth.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second on the table. Uh before we go to a possible roll call vote, uh City Attorney Hamamé, how would you like me to word the the folks that may be leaving the room? Do you want them to wait in the waiting room, and then if you take any action, they will be allowed back into the meeting?
I I think that's Elisa Deaton, uh Clerk Deaton, question as far as how she's administering this particular meeting.
Okay, fantastic. City Clerk Deaton?
So what happens with webinars? There's not actually a waiting room. So what'll happen was is we'll ask everybody who's not a panelist to leave the meeting, and then once they leave, we'll stop the recording, pause the recording, and then I will lock the meeting so nobody can join during closed session. After closing, I unlock the meeting, and then if anybody wants to join, then they're more than welcome to.
So Clerk Deaton, then, if people hang up right now and we're in a closed session, can people automatically sign back in and then they sit in that waiting room until you let them in to that preliminary screen?
I don't know if we've actually had that happen, but that is what is supposed to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you both for your assistance on that. I and we'll get it one day. So we have a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards?
Yeah.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Palchett?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need to wait for Ryan Lair to leave the meeting, which he just did, so I will pause the recording. Okay, so the me- the meeting is unlocked, and the recording is going again.
Thank you. Uh it's been a long night, everyone. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is there anybody in the crowd?
No, there's not.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Move to adjourn?
Bye.
Have a great night, all. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
All right. I'll stop the recording.